And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and good morning. We are here to have a public hearing. Proposed issuance of the city of Salem, Ohio, hospital facilities revenue bonds, series 2025. And this deals with Shepherd of the Valley Obligated Group in the series 2025 bonds. Notice it's hereby given that a public hearing will be held by the Board of Mahoning County Commissioners of the County of Mahoning County on October 16th, 2025 at or about 9:45 a.m. In the county commissioners hearing room, 120 Market Street, Youngstown, Ohio, 44503 as a joint. With the city of Salem, Ohio, to discuss the possible issuance by the city of Salem, Ohio. For itself and the cooperation with the county and the county of Trumbull, Ohio, the city of Salem. Ohio hospitals, facilities, revenue bonds, series 2025, Shepherd of the Valley Obligated Group. And one or more series of the bonds in aggregation principal amount not to exceed $120 million. Is that correct? 120 million? Payment to chapter 140 of the Ohio Revised Code. Nancy, have I read enough? Okay. Okay, this was advertised by the clerk of the board, Mahoning County Commissioners. It was advertised October 7th, 2025. Good? Okay. Now, at this time, I will turn it over to legal counsel, to Mr. Aubrey Sirsi.
Sure.
Did I say that correctly?
Yes.
Okay. Welcome.
Thank you very much. Thank you, commissioners, for having us. My name is Aubrey Sirsi. I'm. A bond attorney with the law firm of Dinsmore and Stoll. And here on behalf of Shepherd of the Valley, this is a tax exempt bond issuance. And in this case, the city of Salem is issuing the bonds. But Shepherd of the Valley has facilities in Trumbull and Mahoning Counties. And the project that they're undertaking, they're constructing a new senior living facility in Salem, Ohio, but they're also paying off some existing debt that was issued by the Trumbull County, by Trumbull County and approved by Mahoning County to finance those facilities in Trumbull and here in Mahoning. So the purpose of this public hearing and the resolution that we have asked for your consideration and approval. It's a requirement of federal tax law. Under section 147 of the Internal Revenue Code, a public hearing must be held in each jurisdiction where proceeds of the tax exempt bonds are being spent. So in this case, since money is being spent to pay off the bonds that were issued to finance the facilities in Trumbull and Mahoning, we have to come to Trumbull and Mahoning County to hold a public hearing to give the public of Mahoning County an opportunity to provide comment on the project. And then with regard to the resolution, the same section of the Internal Revenue Code, applicable elected representative approval is needed for, from each jurisdiction. So in this case, for Mahoning County, you as the county commissioners are the applicable elected representatives. So we are asking for your approval of the issuance of bonds by the city of Salem for some of the proceeds to be used here in Mahoning County. And then secondly, the resolution also authorizes the county to enter into a public hospital agencies agreement. And that's a feature of state law. So the bonds are being issued under section 140 of the Ohio Revised Code. And this section of the Ohio Revised Code allows political subdivisions to enter into cooperative agreements to enable one political subdivision to issue bonds in cooperation with other counties. So one political subdivision, here it's the city of Salem, is serving as the issuer of the bonds. And then Mahoning County and Trumbull County are agreeing for the money that Salem is issuing to be spent here in Mahoning and Trumbull County. The most important thing to emphasize is this, this is not an obligation or a debt of Mahoning County or the city of Salem as the issuer. It's solely an obligation of Shepherd of the Valley. The city of Salem is purely a conduit for the money to pass through to Shepherd of the Valley. So there's no liability for the county. Shepherd of the Valley is the only one responsible for paying back the bonds. I'm happy to, I'm sorry, I know that's a lot and a lot of sections of law and everything, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
I have one.
Oh, sure.
The main thing of this is that basically what this does is benefit nonprofit hospital agencies.
Yes.
That's why we're doing this. And the city of Salem is the issuer.
That's right.
Of these bonds that will benefit the facilities in Mahoning and Trumbull County.
Yes, exactly.
$120 million.
Yes.
And we're held harmless financially.
Yes, no liability.
That's the main thing.
Yep.
Jen's smiling on that. Jen's making sure she smiles.
Got 120 million laying around?
We're held harmless.
I've got to say, you have great facilities.
Great.
Yes, you do. Thank you. Yes, sir. Rich, would you, would you want to?
Sure, yeah. Just first of all, I'd like to thank all of you for your time today. I'm Rich Ramon, I'm the CEO for Shepherd of the Valley. I know you probably all heard about Shepherd of the Valley. We've been in existence for 53 years now. So we have two retirement communities in Trumbull. We have two retirement communities here in Mahoning County, plus our corporate office is also in Mahoning County. So we have three facilities here. We, we serve probably about 275 residents in Mahoning County. We employ just under 200. Also, we have our home health agency at home with Shepherd that's also housed in Mahoning County. So. Our Salem project, we're super excited about that. Our senior leadership team and our board of directors strategically, we decided we wanted to expand our geographic footprint. So we're going into Columbiana in the Salem market. So we purchased 34 acres there. And we're going to be building a retirement community there that would consist of 36 independent condo villas, 52 independent apartments. They're mid-market apartments, first time in this area that you're going to see that. So it's, you know, some people can't afford to move into a condo villa, but these mid-market apartments are for those seniors that really haven't financially saved to a point where they could afford to pay that interest fee. So it's, it's not HUD subsidized, but it's for lower, upper, lower and middle class people. They could afford that, that product. I think you're going to start to see that a little bit more as time goes on. We're also going to have assisted living on that campus as well, plus a wellness center. Where we'll have a full gym, we're going to have a little restaurant, a bar in there. We're going to have pickleball courts, bocce, we're going to have a dog park. So.
Save me. Could you save me a voice?
I'll send you a flyer.
See, I'm 40, I gotta wait about 30 years before. I was going to keep, keep the paint up because I might come see it about 30 years.
Might as well make the investment now.
So we're super excited about it. We broke ground on the 17th of September. Actually, our point footers for the first round of our villas, which will be 12 to start. We've, we have 75 people on the waitlist already.
Wow.
We've signed six contracts, so it's going really well. Super, super excited about it.
That's amazing.
Thank you.
You did wonderful job.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Amazing. I said you did God's work. You know, at some point, one of us or all of us may end up there one day.
Right.
With them and a separate one from me.
No, put me right next to Carol. So she could cook for me.
I'll have a little wing. I'll have a little wing on to the side for you guys.
That would be perfect.
I need a stove. Oh, that's great.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Sirsi, thank you. Is there anybody here that had anything they would like to say concerning this endeavor? If it isn't, none seeing, in favor or opposed. We will close out the hearing. Motion to close.
So moved.
Second. Rule call.
Commissioner DiFavio.
Yes.
Commissioner Muriel Agati.
Yes.
Thank you both.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care. Thank you both. Have a great day.
You too. Thank you. Nice meeting you.
Hey, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we could please remain standing. I have a few families I'd like us to keep in, keep in our hearts for their losses. First of all, one of my deepest sympathies to the Ed Goldner family, to the Dominic Taco family for their loss, and just recently, Glennis or Ellos Hearns. Mrs. Hearns passed away as a very dear friend of mine from Camel, and her daughter works for us. So I just want to say my, our deepest sympathy, so if we could have a moment of silence. Thank you, everybody. Okay, welcome. This is our 41st board meeting. Today is Thursday, October 16th at approximately 10:05 a.m. in the morning. And we will begin with public comments, and I'll ask for your name and address for the record. And you'll have three minutes.
Hi.
Hi.
Morning.
Morning. My name is John Williams, I'm from Weatherstool Township. And forgot my glasses, so I'll do my best here. Anyway, the reason that compelled me to be here today is because last week I watched YouTube video of Speaker Mike Johnson tell the world that he has had it with these people, referring to the patriotic citizens that would spend their valuable time on Saturday to stand up and speak out when they oppose what the government is doing. He said these people are Antifa and Marxists. He claims that the No Kings Protest is a hate America rally. A few days later, Pam Bondi, the Attorney General, declared that anti-fascist Americans are terrorists and will be dealt with. My uncle fought the fascists during World War II. My father fought the fascists in Korea. I have been against fascism since the 10th grade when I learned about the human suffering brought to Europe by Mussolini and Adolf Hitler. I've been, I've been against fascism for over 50 years. I am not a terrorist. And certainly neither will is anybody that stands up and speaks out at the No Kings Rally. The MAGA fascists want the American people to be afraid and stand up and speak out. Our country needs all of us now. Please come to the No Kings Protest this Saturday on Courthouse Square in Warren at 10:30 and at the No Kings Protest downtown Youngstown at 3:00 p.m. And here are a few reasons why. If you believe that the federal government deploys National Guard troops in peaceful American cities overriding the will of that state's governor's fascism, then please stand up for the U.S. Constitution this Saturday at the No Kings Protest downtown Warren at 10:30 and downtown Youngstown at 3:00. If you believe that when the federal government deploys a newly hired, poorly trained army of ICE agents onto the streets of America in unmarked SUVs and vans with agents wearing masks and no identification, stopping citizens of color and demanding to see their papers and would haul them away to who knows where and mostly without a warrant or due process is fascism, then please stand up for the U.S. Constitution this Saturday at the No Kings Protest downtown Warren at 10:30 and downtown Youngstown at 3:00. If you believe that when the President of the United States directs his Justice Department to prosecute his political rivals is fascism, then please stand up for our country this Saturday at the No Kings Protest downtown Warren at 10:30 and downtown Youngstown at 3:00. If you believe.
Five seconds.
Well.
We understand.
Sir.
Yes.
Number one, we voted that guy out of, out of office, the one who went after his political rivals. His name was Joe Biden. He's gone. We voted him out of office. I'd like to know what a MAGA fascist is.
Well.
And I'd like to know who you think a king is. And I'd like to know where you think that when we have ICE agents.
I'm prepared for you, sir. I'm prepared for your questions. Do you really want the answers?
Yes.
Okay, here we go.
We gotta be quick. Go ahead.
Well, you brought it up, I'll take my time.
As long as you can do a call.
We'll get one response and then we're moving on.
Okay. The definition of fascism.
No, no, MAGA fascist, you say. What is MAGA? You called, you called MAGA fascist. You're prepared, let me hear what you're gonna say.
It's a MAGA political party.
Is there a MAGA party?
You better believe there is. There's a Republican Party and a Maga Party, and we are calling Republican Party to take your party back because of all the fascists.
You gotta calm down.
Okay. We appreciate it. Thank, thank you, sir.
I can tell where you're coming from.
Thank you. Okay. Next. Anybody else? Okay. All righty, Carol?
Motion for the approval of the previous minutes of board meeting number 40, Thursday, October 9th, 2025, and approval of bills for payment.
Second. Rule call.
Commissioner DiFavio.
Yes.
Commissioner Muriel Agati. Commissioner Traficanty.
Yes. Advertisement for bids, one and two, sanitary Jill or Bernie?
Good morning, commissioners. This is for the Mahoning County Metropolitan Sewer District Transformer Rebuild at Meander Wastewater Treatment Plant. This is on Main Street and Middle Ridge. And then the second one is for the Boardman Wastewater Treatment Plant. This is for the digester, the aeration, settling tank. And that would be improvement number 536. And this would be the phase two over at our Boardman location on Parkside.
All right. Thank you. Motion?
Motion for the approval of advertisement for bids, one and two.
Second. Rule call.
Commissioner DiFavio.
Yes.
Commissioner Muriel Agati.
Yes.
Commissioner Traficanty.
Yes. Journal entry?
Motion for the approval of journal entry number one.
Second. Rule call.
Commissioner DiFavio.
Yes.
Commissioner Muriel Agati.
Yes.
Commissioner Traficanty.
Yes, agreements, letters A through I. Begin with letter A. And Jen?
Good morning. This is an agreement with the Ohio Department of Health, and it's to offset the costs of public health activities. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Engineers, Mr. Colati or Pat Genetic?
Very, everybody. Letter B is in agreement with BEL Geotechnical Engineering. This is for payment evaluations for various roads throughout the county in the amount of $25,000, and these are non-general funds.
Thank you, sir. Jobs and family, Audrey Morales?
Good morning, commissioners. Good morning, Holly. Good morning, Nancy. Good morning, Jim Fortunato, if he's there. Letter C, Job and Family Service Amendment number two with Nesco Resource LLC for the Ten of Summer Youth Program in the amount of $24,000, non-general.
Audrey, you had a question? I, I think I saw somewhere that the WIC program got an extension to the year, the WIC program.
The WIC program.
Is that true?
They may have, Commissioner, you know, I don't oversee that program. We send our families over there, so I am not absolutely sure on that one with the WIC program.
Okay. I, I saw that on the news and I just, I didn't know. But thank, thank you. Lead, Phil Purrier?
Good morning, commissioners. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
I can't see myself on there. D is in agreement.
You're looking good, don't worry.
Thank you very much.
She did, he did his hair.
Sweat. D is in agreement with WW Construction for lead hazard control and healthy homes work at 2858 Stacy in the amount of $38,510. E is in agreement with JDM Real Estate for the lead hazard control and healthy homes work at 447 East Myrtle in the amount of $59,085. F is in agreement with the Howland Company for lead hazard control, healthy homes work at 1087 Perkins Wood in the amount of $9,520, all non-general. And G is a MOU with YMHA to reimburse us for processing their HUD required environmental review requests for the release of funds for two YMHA projects in the estimated amount of $24,100.
Okay. Thank you, Phil. Sanitary Jill?
H is in agreement with Utility Contracting for sewer line repair on Brandon in the estimated amount of $10,635, non-general.
Thank you. And Sheriff, Adam?
Good morning, commissioners. I is a MOU with Western Reserve Local School District for a school resource officer during school hours in the amount of $32,824.71 per year and to provide police protection to Ellsworth and Berlins Townships in the amount of $10,941.57 each for three years payable to Mahoning County.
Thank you, sir. Motion?
Motion for the approval of number two agreements, A through I.
Second. Rule call.
Commissioner DiFavio.
Yes.
Commissioner Muriel Agati.
Yes.
Commissioner Traficanty.
Yes, resolutions, additions?
Motion for the approval of resolutions, number one additions.
Second. Rule call.
Commissioner DiFavio.
Yes.
Commissioner Muriel Agati.
Yes.
Commissioner Traficanty.
Yes, two A, record of bids. Anna? Hi, Anna.
Good morning. Good morning, Christers, Nancy, Holly. This is the record of bids for the North Wickliff Neighborhood Sidewalk Improvements, Phase A Trees. This is a non-general fund project. It's funded through the Community Development Block Grant. And we'll be coming back to you with the lowest and best bidder for award. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Motion?
Motion for the approval of number two, record of bids, A.
Second. Rule call.
Commissioner DiFavio.
Yes.
Commissioner Muriel Agati.
Yes.
Commissioner Traficanty.
Resolutions, A through K. I'll do letter A. Resolution authorizing the county of Mahoning, Ohio to approve the issuance of hospital facilities revenue bonds of the city of Salem and authorizing other documents in connection with the issuance of such bonds. We held that hearing this morning at 9:45 a.m. And it was a public hearing. Letter B, Jen?
Morning. B is a resolution approving the public hearing on the sales tax for the repair and maintenance of roads and other infrastructure in Mahoning County. And C is a resolution to direct the expenditure of opioid settlement funds to the Mahoning Valley Law Enforcement Task Force in the amount of $83,000.
Thank you, Jen. And Dog Warden, I know Diane's here. There she is.
Good morning, everybody. This is a resolution approving the appointment of Deputy Dog Warden for the Dog Warden's Office.
Thank you. And engineers, Pat?
Commissioners, letter E is a resolution reducing the maximum truck weight limit on county bridges in Lowville Village in the city of Youngstown. Letter F is a resolution to transfer West Mahoning-Trumbull County Line Road, which is county highway number four, from the Mahoning County Highway system to the Austintown Township Highway system. And letter G is a resolution to transfer Newport Square County Highway number 82 from the Mahoning County Highway system to the Boardman Township Highway system.
Okay. And facilities, Alan?
Morning, commissioners. H is a resolution approving the appointment of one custodian for the department. And I just want to add that we will need to go back out for another one. The other person did not accept the job.
Thank you. Grants management, Anna?
Good morning again. This is a resolution approving the application from Compass Family and Community Services to receive funds from the marriage license fees, divorce and dissolution fees in the estimated amount of $45,000. This is through the Attorney General's Office program.
And letter J?
This is a resolution to enter into an agreement with Craig Beach Village for the Idlewild Avenue Storm Sewer Installation Project in the amount of $200,000.
Okay, thank you. And Sheriff, Adam?
K is a resolution approving the moral obligation payment of $5,000 to Youngstown State University for the YSU Police Academy Fall Semester.
Thank you very much. Your motion?
Motion for the approval of number three resolutions, A through K.
Second. Rule call.
Commissioner DiFavio.
Yes.
Commissioner Muriel Agati.
Yes.
Commissioner Traficanty.
Yes, for the good of the order, any elected officials or department heads like to comment? Oh, is she supposed to talk? I thought it was staff. Yeah. Okay. Okay. All right, none being said. Gino, Carol, Carol, Gino?
The only thing I wanted to commend, the commissioners and of course Jen and the task force is that the $83,000 that we awarded, and my two colleagues could make another statement on this, and Dwayne, that we awarded to the task force is for the help for basically addiction and for mental illness and for those of our people that need help through the task force. And of course, Gino's on that board. I think not the board, but you're on the, with the Wellness Center, deals with this as well. So you could probably give them more information on that and Anthony. But I just wanted to bring that up because we did go see the building. I don't know if I'm allowed to say that, but we did go see the building where the task force is housed with, with what they do for all of Mahoning County. And I'll tell you what, we are very well protected here in Mahoning County. We need to really thank our law enforcement people and Jerry Green because with him, he opens the door for all of the things that we need here. Not only with the mental illness and the jail, but for opiates and everything else. He has that compassion for all of us. So with that, I will definitely, I'm done and have a nice weekend. Enjoy yourself. I don't know what the weather will be like, but stay safe.
You know, ironically, I don't watch a lot of TV. I watch more YouTube, YouTube channels and stuff because you don't get all the noise with it. But I'm watching something called Law and Crime last night. And it's one of these episodes, and it was talking about this, these internet stings and stuff where the, you know, the police act as women or something or underage children. Here I'm watching the thing, and they say the Mahoning County Violent Crime Task Force, then I see Chief Jeff Allen, and they're interviewing, they're interviewing our, the head of our task force on this national program. So I took a screenshot and said.
We got the best.
I'm telling you. They go out, they pose as this, one of the deputies or someone posed as a woman who wanted to traffic her daughter. And these guys get on there and they, they brought this guy who was actually an internal medicine. He's a surgeon in Erie, Pennsylvania. He came here to meet this mother and daughter, and he met Jeff and his buddies when he got here. So his medical career probably went down after that. But I mean, that's kind of, kind of the work they do that you don't see. I mean, different agencies, I know Austintown supports the, the task force and we, of course, we support it. And it's, it's a way that you don't see every day. They're not the cops going down the street or the guys, but they're working behind the scenes, keeping us all safe. That's why I will always stand with law enforcement and beside them because what they sacrifice for us, what they do for us every day, you can't, you can't imagine. And there's also the. No, you're good. I think I want to say something.
No.
I just want to say they're, they're doing a heck of a job. And, and one other note, I mean, it, this last couple of mornings, it's been cold outside. And we're working with our agencies and, and other people, and we're trying to get the city to help us to have something for people that are outside, absolutely have nowhere to go when it's cold. And we're trying to, to meet with the mayor to bring him in to discuss how they could cooperate with us. Because a lot of the people, a lot of the people that need the help are in the city. And we just want to work together, have some kind of mutual understanding with, with the city and say, hey, we'll, we'll put this in, what can you do? And we're working, we're working to those ends. And there's some other things I'd like to see more cooperation with the city. Myself, Anthony and Carol all believe that the city of Youngstown is the county seat. And, and this is where everything starts. I mean, people come here for services and everything. Well, we should show better cooperation, I think, between the city and the county to get things done, starting from the city on the way out. And we're willing to do that. We try to step up every day. And we're just waiting to hear back for some, for some, from some emails to get, to get people to the table. We have that. We have issues with, with some HUD botchers we're trying to work on, and we're not getting any. It's, it's, it's very frustrating. Very, government's very frustrating, but we'll get there. All right, I, I rambled enough, but I just. We gotta, we're gonna work together. You gotta do so.
Absolutely. Mr. Santos, is there, would you like to? Mr. Santos, is there, would you like them?
Uh, I just want to thank you for the commissioners. I mean, Ohio in itself is already the fifth worst in this nation for human trafficking and drug trafficking. And Mahoney County sits like right there smack dead in the middle of some major cities, Akron, Cleveland, Pittsburgh. We're about, what, three mo, three hours away from Buffalo? So we are primed for that type of crime to come in. And I appreciate the support you have to the sheriff's office and them supporting the local agencies to get this off. It's a sad thing when you wake up every morning and you see another person being trafficked on the news. Um, it is disheartening, but the fact that our officers are out there doing their very best to prevent that from happening is appreciated. They couldn't do it without your guys' support. So thank you for everything y'all do.
Thank you, boss. Absolutely. And we always support the task force. I, I believe I read in the National Law Enforcement Journal, uh, a few years ago, we were number four or, uh, in hu, in, in human trafficking because like you stated, the geography of where we are and, and the transportation. I mean, it, it has to stop. And you have to support your police, your law enforcement, your task forces, because they're out there every day trying to stop a kid from being raped. It, it, it's, it's an ugly scenario, but I, I agree with Carol and Gino and particularly with the warming centers. We had a very good meeting last week with Sheila Triplet, my cap. And Sheila did such a great job summing up what her agency does. I was mesmerized by this lady's knowledge. And she said, you know, she said, and you, you can remember this. She says, "My program for many years was strictly for the poorest, the poor." She says, "Now it's for the working poor." Yep. That's how things have stepped up. And she's very concerned about the center, the senior center that she has, we're looking at trying to help her. And she's very much worried about the shutdown and getting warming centers, um, for the elderly. And she always sets aside money for the most vulnerable. And she really touched my heart, and Carol and Gino can attest to that. She's just a plethora of information. And I hate to see her leave. Uh, actually, she's going to be retiring. So I'm saying, we all know who Sheila Triplett is. I knew her husband really well. Bill Triplet, we go way back, Jim trafficking days, the two football guys, you should hear those stories.
He used to come to every city council meeting that was there.
Kansas City Chiefs and the Minnesota Vikings, absolutely. So we're working, as, as Gino said, and Carol, we're, we're trying to see what we can do with the city because the weather's getting colder. Think about that. No food, you know, no warm place to go, no money in your pocket. That's no way to do it. So, thank you. And Nancy, when's our next meeting?
Next Thursday, right here.
Okay. Motion? Pastor Simon, I hear that voice.
Services for Eloise Hearns tomorrow at the Washington Funeral Home, nine and ten.
Okay.
Eloise Hearns?
I thought it was tonight at Wasco. Am I wrong?
Yeah, I got it from my daughter.
Gina?
Gina.
I, I told, I thought it was tonight at, at Wasco Funeral Home.
Oh, geez. He knows.
Okay, we got a fun, because I sent.
I'm, I'm on the program.
Okay, so say, say that again, it's.
Tomorrow, uh,
That's the funeral service.
Funeral service.
Tonight's the calling hours.
At Wasco.
Okay, but the church service is.
Tomorrow.
Say it again.
Nine and ten at Washington Funeral Home.
Thank you. Thank you for that, master. Did you know Ms. Harden, did you?
Oh, yeah.
I know, what a lady, huh? She made the best pies. Anyway.
Sheila's retirement is next Friday, next Friday. I'm on the board, my cap.
Commissioner? Commissioner, this is Audrey.
Yes, Audrey.
And, um, uh, I'm looking at something that my HR department sent out. So we're gonna have to correct that as well, uh, Pastor Simon, because we have service this Friday, October seventeenth, ten AM, Wasco Funeral Home. And that was given to our HR department, because Gina works for us, by Gina herself. And my HR person was on here, and I don't see her on here now, but this came out. So we will have to correct ours as well, um, as the commissioners too, because this is what we've received. Um, visitation at Wasco's and services at Wasco. So Pastor Simon, you're on the program, you said?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so we'll, we'll correct it for our agency as well. Sorry to hold you up for that, guys. But Commissioner, you were correct, that's what we got, Wasco.
Okay.
And it might be, it might be.
It could be.
I'd actually check it.
We're gonna check it.
We'll find out.
Pastor Simon going to another place and Anthony going somewhere else.